In your turn, to start, if everyone could please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic of which this stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, council. It's so good to see everybody here tonight, especially in the weather that we're having right now. So we have a roll call. Ms. Martinez?
The motion carried unanimously, from all counselors present.
Okay, thank you. And we have an adjustment to the agenda. Ms. Brooks?
Yes, we have just a minor one. The ceremonial item, the introduction of our new technology technician. He lives in Monty and the roads are a little bad, so we thought we would just move that to the next meeting.
Okay, that sounds good. Thank you so very much. So Counsel Grego?
With that, I'll make the motion. Do we approve the agenda as amended?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Okay, please start voting. Ms. Martinez?
This one's motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Up next, we have on our agenda, the citizen comment section. This is a section where we have any citizen who are out in the audience who would like to make comments, please walk up to the podium and state your name, and then you can make your comments. We also ask that you keep your comments to within three minutes. If you are still talking at the three minute mark, I will politely ask you to end your conversations at that time. Today, we're going to start off with our live participants, and then we'll go to Zoom to ask those Zoom participants if they have any comments. I have a comment card for James Slovac.
James Slovac. I know it's not on the agenda. I know there's a meeting tomorrow, and I just wanted to really touch on it real quick. Saint Benedict's, as far as the power issue, has anyone considered self-contained solar power for each one of the units? We have those power units for RVs and campers. It might eliminate a whole situation, fairly inexpensive. And then the only other thing I have to comment is, in the Alamosa State Banking, where we're going to propose a potential 215 parking spaces, and the city is proposing to put 100,000, and there was a grant of 430,000, and then Friday's is 135,000. I looked at the lease that was on the agenda, and I was just curious, what is the compensation to the state bank? I don't see a number on a yearly basis to the state bank. And after the 2028 is up, what is Friday's responsibility when it comes to that lease, if they're going to be using that for primary parking? And is there a lease between Fridays and the city? Separate lease leasing? And that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Slovac. Okay, we'll go ahead to Zoom participants to see if we have anyone on Zoom who would like to make any comments during this time. Ms. Martinez, will you give them instructions on how to raise their hand to be recognized?
Yes, sir. If you're on the Zoom app and you want to speak for citizen comment, just use the raise your hand feature in the bottom of the screen, or if you're on a telephone, it'll be star nine. I do not see anyone raising their hand, Mayor.
Okay, I don't see any hands raised either, so we'll go ahead and close this segment of the citizen comment, and then I'll turn it over to staff for follow-up.
Thank you, Mayor. The questions related to the agenda item, I'll address when we come up to that agenda item. The question about the homeless brainstorming, I will go ahead and talk about that. I was going to update council under staff update that we did have our meeting today. We are going to continue brainstorming on ideas that would not be able to be a solution for this year, given where we are from a timeframe perspective, but we are moving forward with La Puente looking to purchase solar battery packs that will hook into warming blankets, electric blankets, and so they'll be the right wattage. They will be working with Dawn and Harry to make sure that the extension cords that they buy are the appropriate ones, as well as the battery packs having enough watts to last a night. And so that is something that we're going to move quickly on, and La Puente will be looking at ordering them and distributing them as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you for the comments. That brings us to consent calendar A. Counsel V. Hill?
Mayor, I move that we approve consent calendar A.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? If not, please start voting. Ms. Martinez?
The motion carried unanimously.
Up next, we have business brought forward by city staff, police, first reading of ordinance number four dash 2022, and ordinance amending the definition of police officer in section 11 dash 22 through 11 dash 24 code of ordinances of the city of Alamosa.
Thank you, Mayor. That'll be me presenting this, and I am going to give you a little bit of background on where this sits, and then I'm going to play you a surveillance video from Walmart that shows what occurred with a case that we had in municipal court that gave rise to this proposed ordinance. And really, what this ordinance is designed to do is to allow prosecutions for primarily resisting arrest or obstructing a peace officer rather than a police officer, and also defining a little bit better how a peace officer who is not in uniform needs to identify him or herself as a peace officer before those provisions about resisting and obstructing will kick in. Right now, the way the ordinance is written, it applies to police officers. And so police officers is just Alamosa Police Department, and arguably also the Adams State University Police Department, but not Alamosa sheriff's deputies or state patrol officers. Those are peace officers. That's a broader category. They're post-certified, but they're not Alamosa Police Department. So right now, the ordinance applies only to resisting or obstructing an Alamosa or Adams State University police officer, even if it's another peace officer, and the issue occurs in the city of Alamosa. And that's what occurred in the video clip that I'll show you. The other aspect of it is that the ordinance as currently written requires a police officer who is trying to effect an arrest, or trying to carry out other law enforcement duties and is being obstructed, requires that officer to identify him or herself as an officer by, the words are exhibiting credentials. And that's the other reason for showing you this video. As these things play out, there really isn't necessarily time to reach into your pocket and pull out your badge if you're an out-of-uniform officer. If you're in uniform, it's not a problem. If you're in uniform, you're in uniform, and that's all you need to have. But if you're out of uniform, how do you appropriately identify yourself as a peace officer? So those are the two parts to the ordinance. And let me show you the video. This is a video of a stop that occurred at, you'll recognize this as the entry and exit from Walmart. And what you'll see is sheriff's deputy Rick Martinez, who is off-duty, coming out of Walmart, noticing something going on, turning around and helping to, helping assist Nathan Northrup, who's the Walmart security officer, in stopping someone who is shoplifting. And it's a little bit amusing as well, so, and it's short, so this will be fun. Here's, if you don't know him, this is Rick Martinez in the gray shirt. And he notices something, turns around, and here comes Nathan Northrup, who's the security at Walmart, and they've got a shoplifter stopped, trying to get her, and she won't get off her phone. He has verbally identified himself as a sheriff's deputy. This is a fairly classic case of resisting arrest. And it gets better. So you've got, Rick Martinez is not a small guy. Neither is Nathan Northrup. But Nathan has Walmart policy that they will not go hands-on. So off she goes. She was charged with resisting arrest. They found, they know who she is. She's not a, she's known to law enforcement in the city, so they know who she is. She knows who they are. I mean, when I talked to Deputy Martinez, I asked him if he identified himself, and I asked Nathan Northrup if Deputy Martinez identified himself, and they both said, yes, he did. And Deputy Martinez says, and she knows who I am. I've had numerous interactions with her. So they were, they did, they know where she lives. They later on went and served her with the summons and complaint for resisting arrest and for shoplifting. Because this was a fairly egregious resisting arrest, she is subject to jail under your ordinance that defines which kind of offenses are subject to jail and which are not, which means she got a court-appointed defense attorney. And the court-appointed defense attorney pointed out to me that, under our ordinance, she, he did not present credentials. He did not pull out a badge and say, here's my badge, I'm a sheriff's deputy. Or they often also carry an identifying card in their wallet. And he didn't, as you saw, really have time to do that. And I said, you know what? You're right. Case dismissed. So she's there on the shoplifting charge, but not on the resisting arrest charge. And then when I looked further at it, I thought, again, not only did he not present credentials, and he didn't really have an opportunity to, but also, he's not a police officer. He's a sheriff's deputy. So those are the two things that this ordinance brought to light. The proposed ordinance. Drag this back over. And shrink it back down. There we go. So the proposed ordinance addresses this by redefining a, we don't use the word police officer in the proposed ordinance, rather the word peace officer, which has the same definition as defined in Colorado statutes. It's a post-certified police officer. So it's a sheriff's deputy, Alamosa Police Department, state patrol, potentially a federal marshal. If there is an instance of resisting arrest that occurs then within the city of Alamosa, it doesn't matter which, which organization the peace officer is with, it can be prosecuted as a violation of the ordinance. The other thing that it does is gets at this question of how, how is a off-duty peace officer supposed to reasonably identify him or herself as an off-duty peace officer? And so the language that the proposed ordinance use, uses, it says that a peace officer includes a peace officer out of uniform who has identified himself or herself verbally or otherwise as a peace officer, and if the totality of circumstances allow opportunity for doing so, has exhibited his or her peace officer credentials to the person the officer is attempting to arrest. So the change is, it recognizes that sometimes there's just not, not an opportunity to do that, but as long as you have verbally identified yourself as a peace officer, and actually are a peace officer, then the ordinance can apply. So that's where we are.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Suiso. We'll bring it back to council for comment. I think Counsel Daniel did, Counsel Grego.
Thank you, Eric, for explaining, and thank you for sharing the video. So I have two questions. The first is, if we adopt this new language for the, I totally agree about the peace officers. I have no concerns about that. If we adopt the new language, will we then change our internal policy regarding off-duty officers?
This is actually consistent with our internal policy regarding off-duty officers in the sense that, and the chief can correct me if I'm wrong, in my recollection of the policy, I did ask chief for a copy of it, is that off-duty Alamosa Police Department officers would not be in this situation because they are, the policy is they are to call 911. They are not to intervene themselves. So our policy will remain that way. It won't change. We're not trying to broaden the scope of action for our police officers. It's just in a situation like this, where, like the one I showed on the video, where officer safety comes into a concern because the sheriff's department may not have that same policy, and he was, I have to assume, acting pursuant to the sheriff's department's policy on action. Then we run a risk that, that, you know, you put officers and other people at risk when people resist arrest, and that's what we're trying to avoid. So we won't change our policy, assuming I said it correctly, chief.
You sure did.
So I saw, I saw that part, but then if there has to be an intervention, it says if involvement is reasonably necessary, and then it goes on, official identification should also be displayed. And so that's the part, and that's in 387.4.1, under the intervention procedure. So I just want to make sure we're consistent. And it's okay, like, I don't mind. That should doesn't mean they have to. It just means it should be.
Right, and I would not recommend changing our policy.
The other thing that I just wanted to say is that I agree with this. I wonder if instead of them never showing their credentials, I think after the situation is taken care of and de-escalated, would it be appropriate at that point to require or request credentials be shown if they do carry them on their person? Like, is that, I don't know if that's typical for all off-duty officers. And so, but I would think if someone is being arrested by someone who is in plain clothes and only verbally identified themselves, I would want to be able to verify after that situation has been over, like, after maybe subdued or whatever, that they really were who they said they were.
Yeah, that certainly makes sense, and we can add that provision in. I did check with the chief on this also. Generally, I think our officers do carry, if not their badge, then their ID card.
We do. Thank you, Counsel Daniel, Counsel Grego, and then Counsel Carson.
I have two questions. So you're saying that the reason that, that officer or security guy at Walmart didn't help out is they're not supposed to touch somebody?
Well, he helped out, but-
Well, he's just standing there.
He's kind of blocking her, you know, you may have seen that. But yeah, Walmart's policy is their security personnel cannot go hands-on with shoplifters.
They're not supposed to touch them. They're just-
Right. At, well, you know, and they, they don't have the same training that peace officers have, and they don't have the same ability to justify use of force. So it's certainly a reasonable policy that Walmart has.
My second question, explain a little further on this peace officer deal. You're saying that highway patrol, sheriff, and other officers are not included in this ordinance, or how do you explain that? I don't, I don't quite understand.
They're not included in the ordinance as it currently stands. As it currently stands, only police officers can make a, can be involved in a situation that's resisting arrest. Police officers is a subset of peace officers. And so what I'm proposing, or what this ordinance is proposing, is to change it from only police officers to be all peace officers. So include sheriff's deputies, highway patrol. How do I explain it?
It's just a matter of vocabulary, really. Everybody's got a different title. Sorry. State trooper is obviously a trooper, sheriff's office member is a deputy, and we city officers are police officers. So it's just a matter of the vocabulary here. A peace officer would cover all of us.
So that, one of the reasons that part of the case was thrown out is because it was the sheriff's office, and that they're not covered under our current language.
Right, because a sheriff's deputy is not a police officer.
So that's why-
And they've stopped and arrested too, who knows?
Somebody's not muted in the attendees.
Okay, so, so, yeah, so that's one of the reasons that got thrown out is that the sheriff's office cannot write that ticket into muni court, and this would fix that.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Grego.
Sheriff's officer still couldn't write it into muni court. It would require an Alamosa police officer to do that, but it could be with respect to a resisting that happened by resisting a sheriff's deputy.
Okay, thank.
One more comment. And that's only for, for a case like this. What about a sheriff guy writing a ticket downtown? He can't write a ticket downtown, or is that a whole different animal there?
The only, the only people who write tickets into muni court are our police department and the Adams State University Police Department.
But I'm saying those sheriff guys that are stopping people traffic downtown, they can do that, even-
So all of, all of their paperwork goes to the state courts?
Every what?
It goes to the state courts, the county courts.
They don't come to us.
They do not come to us. The only, only agencies like the, the city attorneys pointed out would be your local police department and the Adams State University Police Department.
But they are allowed to write tickets and do traffic stops in the city?
Yes, so the city is still within the county of Alamosa, so they, they can still operate that way, but they just write all their citations and criminal episodes within the state courts.
Thank you.
Okay, Counsel Carson, and then Counsel Hensley.
So what happens just theoretically if that person that they were trying to arrest, that Rick was trying to arrest, or even a city police officer, because you know, the policy is they have to dial 911. What happens if that person starts assaulting Nathan, like physically hurting him? Do you still have to just stand there and call 911 as a city cop? You could intervene, right?
So a lot of it's obviously common sense. You know, we look at the exigency of what's going on, the totality of the circumstance. Yes, then we're absolutely going to intervene.
Yeah, that officer can't be reprimanded if he stops an assault in Walmart for not dialing 911. Because that's kind of ridiculous.
No. On something like what we're dealing with here, which is a shoplifter, really what the council is advising you of is Walmart does have their, their own policies and procedures. They're not allowed to go hands-on with them. We do, to a certain point, and once that gets to the level of resisting arrest, the problem that we've encountered here is the way that our ordinance reads, it's really just your city police department who are the police officers. So it actually read incorrectly in which the case was dismissed, correct?
Yeah, no, I've got all that. I'm just concerned with, with the city policy of one of our off-duty officers seeing somebody getting assaulted and having to stop and go 911. You know what I mean?
Right, no, just the totality of the circumstances.
Thank you. That's all I just wanted. I just wanted to understand that. Thanks.
Thank you, Counsel Carson. Counsel Hensley?
So I guess I'm just curious, since they, they're not hands-on at Walmart, and she was known, chances are that was just bad timing. She was probably going to plan just to run away because he wouldn't have been able to stop her. Is that correct?
You know, it's hard for me to say what she was going to do.
Because he wouldn't, so the Walmart person wouldn't have been able to stop her.
You know, we rely a lot on, on the security footage, because obviously we got a pretty high call volume at Walmart.
Okay, I don't see any other mics on. I just have a question too, for both of you. I know this has to do with them announcing that they're law enforcement or peace officer. I know the video we watched didn't have any sound, but if that person brings this video to court and there's no sound, what, what type of proof do we use to show that they announced that they were a law enforcement or peace officer?
Well, it would be the testimony of, in this case, Deputy Martinez and Nathan Northrup, who heard him announce that he was a peace officer. So you would have testimony to that effect. And any other passersby, but those generally, we have no idea who they are, so we wouldn't be able to get testimony from them.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Grego?
Well, if there's no further questions, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we pass on first reading, ordinance number four dash 2022.
I'll second.
Set it for a public hearing on March, first week in March, March, March 2nd.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Does, does that motion include Counselor Daniel's suggestion to add a provision that once the situation allows for it, that the officer does present credentials?
Yes, thank you.
So we got a motion, second. Any further discussion? Okay, if we can start voting, please.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. The next item we have is a motion authorizing additional $14,000 for the purchase of a police vehicle in 2022.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council. Good evening. Just a little background. Each year, the police vehicle replacement program allows for two to three new patrol vehicles, and the approved 2022 budget includes the purchase of two new police vehicles for this year in the total amount of $96,000. So unfortunately, due to the unprecedented inflation, the approved CIP budget falls short of the needed funding by $14,000 for these two vehicles. So staff is asking for a motion authorizing an additional $14,000 for the purchase of these two police vehicles.
Thank you, chief.
We have placed it in the 10-year plan, and it is, it is sustainable. We can afford it.
Counsel V. Hill? Mayor, I move that we approve an additional $14,000 for the purchase of two police vehicles, scheduled in 2022.
Okay, I have a motion.
Second, I have a question.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and now we're opening up for discussion also with Counsel Grego.
Do these go out for bid also?
Yes, they do.
And bid everywhere, it was up 14,000?
I'm sorry?
The bid everywhere, it was up 14,000?
So that, that's the lowest bid?
Oh, wow.
So we're still up $7,000 per vehicle, not includes the 3% inflation that we increased last year. So the prices have just gone really beyond what we can, what we can work with the budget right now.
These mics are kind of low. I can, you can barely hear from up there. Jim?
Okay, alrighty. So we have a motion, second. Any further discussion? If not, please start voting. Ms. Martinez?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Up next, we have on the fire, first reading of ordinance number three dash 2022, and ordinance regulating open and indoor burning within the city of Alamosa.
The city of Alamosa has a burn ban in place in section 7 dash 2, and it says, "No material shall be set on fire or burned within the city limits without permission of the fire chief or the fire chiefs designate." That's fairly broad. It prohibits wood stoves. It prohibits charcoal grills. It prohibits, arguably, your boiler and your furnace, which burn gas, which is a material. It prohibits all kinds of things that the city has no interest in prohibiting. This, this issue was brought to light when Ron Lozier, who has come before council before, was stopped. He wasn't cited, but he was stopped and had a discussion with an officer because he was burning his weeds, which we do want to prohibit. And he ceased burning his weeds, and then he looked at the ordinance and says, well, wait, I can't, I can't burn anything. And so in discussions with Chief Chapman, Chief Chapman agrees that it would behoove us to narrow this ordinance down to only prohibit the things that we want to prohibit. And so that's what this revision to ordinance 7 dash 2 does. The primary concern to address is the burning of weeds and trash and rubbish, and people who might have an incinerator, that kind of thing, which, which we do have a health problem with the kinds of particulates that are put into the air from doing that. So this ordinance rewrites that, prohibits the open burning. So this ordinance, uh, rewrites that, prohibits the open burning, uh, except for, um, of, of things like that. Uh, it does allow for outdoor fireplaces, chimeneas, um, even, a, and I did, I ran a draft of this by Mr. Lozier, uh, since he, he had a vested interest in it, and he caused me to expand the size of the outdoor fire pit that could be used, because he said his is bigger than that. I thought, yeah, okay, I can see bigger fire pits than I had initially proposed. So I think that this makes a, a good effort at, um, uh, approaching burn bans for what we really do want to prohibit and allowing things that we are quite fine with having the, having the residents burn outside.
Okay, Mr. Suezal, um, we have, uh, Counselor Carson, then Counselor Vehoe.
I was just gonna make a motion, I agree one hundred percent, and I actually commend, uh, Counselor Suezal, cause I think this ordinance is very silly, I, I've dealt with it myself in the past, uh, so I'd make a motion that we pass um, ordinance three dash twenty twenty two and set it for first, for first, uh, for public hearing on March twen, March second, twenty twenty two, or se, seven P M, or soon thereafter, as the matter may be heard.
Uh, Councilor Vehoe?
Second, but I have a question.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, now we're opening up for discussion.
Councilor Vehoe? Can I, can a, can someone burn, have like a little, uh, fire in their backyard, roasting marshmallows in the fire pit type thing?
Yes.
Well, I just take it, thank you.
Okay, good, we have another comment, Counselor Daniel?
So I just want to say thank you both to Mr. Lozier for coming and like bringing his perspective, cause I do think he reads, reads into things very well. But also to staff, and so thank you Eric for looking at it again and bringing it up and having the conversation with the chief, because I think it's things like that, this, that make our ordinances better, and so I really appreciate that a lot.
Counselor Woodward?
Barbecue smokers are okay?
Yes, they are.
Alright. Any further discussion? Alright.
Especially if you bribe the city attorney. With, uh, some barbecue.
Okay, I think we might be missing a couple. Thank you.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Martinez. That brings us to the next item on the agenda. Under City Manager Legal, the second reading and public hearing of ordinance number two dash twenty twenty two, and ordinance of approving an intergovernmental agreement with Water Activity Enterprise Special Improvement District number six. You have a hot mic tonight?
I do, so here, we're having some issues with our computers here, um, and I'm asking Heather to load it up, and it's loading very slowly, but this is the, uh, second reading for this ordinance, this is essentially continuing the agreement we have with sub district six that covers our depletions from our well pumping during the time that our augmentation plan is pending in the court. And we did this, uh, the last water season and a little bit of the one before. Uh, the, the basic nuts and bolts of the ordinance is that they end up paying us to cover our depletions, because when you look at the, the state's model, which shows the effect that our well pumping has on the various rivers, our well pumping has a positive effect on the Rio Grande, and so they use that positive effect to help offset other wells in their sub district that have a negative effect, and they pay us, uh, sixty five dollars an acre foot. Uh, the estimation is a thousand acre foot credit from our well pumping, so it's sixty five thousand dollars per year that they pay us pursuant to this agreement. So this is ready for a public hearing.
Okay, so what I'll do, Counselor Carson, I'll open up the public hearing, then I'll come back to us after that, okay? Alright, good. We'll go ahead and open up the, uh, public hearing for ordinance number two dash twenty twenty two, and ordinance approving intergovernment agreement, Water Activity Enterprise Special Improvement District number six of the Rio Grande Water Conservation District. At this time, if we have anyone in the audience who would like to speak at this public hearing in regards to this matter, please come up to the podium, state your name and make your comments. Okay, I don't see anyone in the audience here, um, so I'm going to go to Zoom, and Ms. Martinez, if you could give them instructions of how to raise their hand, so we can allow them an opportunity to participate.
Yes, sir, if you're on the Zoom app, you'll use the raising hand feature in the bottom of the screen. And if you're on a telephone, you'll dial star nine. I do not see anyone raising their hand, Mayor.
Okay, I don't see any hands either, Ms. Martinez, so we'll now close this public hearing and bring it back to, uh, council for comments, and we have Councilman Carson.
I move that we approve the ordinance authorizing the intergovernmental agreement for inclusion of the city's municipal wells in sub district six's twenty two and twenty twenty three annual replacement plans.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? No? Okay, please start voting.
The motion carried unanimously.
Awesome, thank you, Council, great job. That brings us down to the next item on the agenda. Motion authorizing the city manager to sign a lease agreement with Alamosa State Bank for the improvement and use of downtown parking lot.
Thank you, Mayor. As council knows, um, something that was both in the city's comprehensive plan as well as the downtown plan was the need for additional parking. And so we were really excited when Rachel was successful in securing a four hundred and thirty thousand dollar grant for two different parking lots, that's really hard to make the case that parking lots and economic development are the same thing, and so um, kudos to, to Rachel for that. The item that's before you tonight is related to the parking lot that is off Fourth Street, that would be, um, a partnership with Alamosa State Bank, and let me go ahead and show that real fast. What you can see here is the yellow, which is the part of the property that Alamosa State Bank use or owns, the part to the west here is where the city owns, and this part right here is where one of the sews are the ownership. We are in conversations with them, um, but that has not progressed to any type of agreement yet. Um, what the, this part of the grant will do is we will lease what's in yellow, and then we can redesign and repave the entire parking lot. And, just one second. By doing that, we will be able to pick up an additional thirty four spots. Um, additionally, right now, it's signed for just private use. Um, we'll pick up thirty eight, I'm sorry, thirty eight spots. The thirty four spots that are there right now, um, for Alamosa State Bank are signed for private use for all, all times. This lease will also allow outside of those business hours and others, those seven, and, you know, those thirty four spots to be able to be used by the public as well. So the net gain for this area would be about seventy two, um, parking spots outside of business hours. Um, there is no payment to Alamosa State Bank, because essentially we're improving their property by repaving it, plus we would be maintaining it for the length of the lease. Um, so there is a benefit to them, um, they also get to maintain their thirty four spots, it'll be reconfigured, but they keep their thirty four spots during the business hours that will be dedicated, so there's no loss to Alamosa State Bank, plus with us maintaining it, it's a little less headache for them and, and those types of things, so that's what the, the relationship is. It, the initial term runs until December thirty first, twenty twenty eight, and will renew annually after that point in time. Oh, and the other question, I'm catching this in the, the council communication, the lease with Friday Health will be at a future meeting.
Okay, thank you, um, Ms. Brooks, uh, Counselor Hinsley?
Should I wait till after the, is this a public hearing? Oh, I'm sorry, okay, so my, my question is, um, so we have it till twenty twenty eight. Um, I guess I'm just curious, in the sense of why it's, till then, why it's not a longer lease, just in case, I mean, could they at any moment say, okay, now we don't want to have that lease anymore, or, I mean, I guess I'm just curious.
They cannot end it earlier than the lease. Um, and that is what we agreed upon for a length of term for the amount of investment that was being made, that they were comfortable with.
If for some reason they didn't do the lease anymore after that, it would just mean then those spots that are the banks.
It would mean that that, um, yellow part goes back to them, so whichever ones so it'll be redesigned, so whatever falls within this yellow area goes back to them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Counselor Hinsley, thank you, Ms. Brooks, Counselor Gregel?
I had a question on, uh, those private parkings, are those the ones that Cavities uses, Cavility Building?
They have a lease to them.
Oh.
And so they can continue to lease it to them or someone else, it's, it's for their private use between those hours that they would maintain for thirty four.
And if the bank sells that building, then?
The lease would go with it.
Okay. No comments? Okay, I, I'll have a comment real, real quick. Um, just to clarify what Counselor Hin, Hinsley mentioned, if for some reason at the end of the lease and the uh, parking lot goes back to the bank, then also the responsibility for maintaining those slots go back to the bank as well, am I correct?
Correct, we would not be maintaining it.
Okay, thank you. Um, and my comment is, I know Alamosa State Bank has been a very good community partner, uh, in working with the city, and I'm really thankful for Rachel and her team applying for the grant, and, and more importantly, finding that collaboration, working with the bank to help fill that void of parking that we have, creating a net gain of seventy two slots, it's very good, very creative, and, uh, keep up the great work, team. Alrighty. Counselor Gregel?
With that, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we authorize the city manager to sign a lease agreement with Alamosa State Bank.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Yes.
Counselor Vehoe?
Uh, when, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
When, uh, would construction start on this?
That's why I'm sitting up front. Um, so we're kind of hoping that we can do the work this summer. Um, so the matching funds come from the twenty twenty two budget. Um, we are still trying to figure out how to fund the landscaping and the lighting. So these projects go together, and we're still looking for other funding sources for that, so the cost of these projects is just all of the dirt work and everything else to do the paving, so we're, we're crossing our fingers, it's twenty twenty two, but technically we have twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three according to the requirements of the grant.
Thank you.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second, uh, no further discussion, please start voting. Might be missing one, there we go.
The motion carried unanimously.
Alright, Council, you all are rocking and rolling today, good job. We're down here at the, close to the end of the agenda here in the, um, the section for art, uh, purchase, the fun part here. So I'm assuming this is gonna be you, Ms. Brooks?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, um, so I don't know if you guys think this is fun or not, but it's not often we buy art, just once a year. And, um, so it is that time again, I'm gonna go over to the presentation. Um, as a, um, as you're looking at these, as a reminder, we've reduced the prices from what they're listed in the brochure by twenty percent, because um, if someone from the public buys it, the city gets twenty percent as a commission, but since we're the one buying it, we don't have to pay ourselves the twenty percent, so we just reduce it. Um, before you start thinking about, um, what ones from the current collection you might want to buy, we thought it would be good maybe just to do a reminder of the pieces we already have purchased, and so that way if we wanted to look at doing something a little different, or, you know, something like that, so what we already own are is gentle, rocket ship, sisters, longhorn, old goat, El Pastor, which was my, I think our first one. Roller gig and Troville. So that's it, so those are the pieces that we own. We had purchased the Lego piece and that was destroyed, and we'd purchased that other piece that turned out to be a fake. So this is the city's collection. The twenty twenty one, um, so we have eleven thousand, six hundred and twenty three to spend. The twenty twenty one art sculptures, as you know, we usually do a people's choice. This is the one that received first place, it is wood, it's Balance in the Fray by Si Hoover. So that was a people's choice. And then we also regularly asked the art committee what they would recommend. So their first one would be Under the Lover's Moon by A.J. Davis. Their second pick would be Side by Side, Side by Each by Charlotte Zink. And then the third one is Sato Horse, but that's unfortunately twenty four thousand. Um, people's choice, just as an F Y I, we focused on first place, but here's which piece won second place, and which piece won third place, is the Lotus Emerging. And then I'm just gonna go each piece. So we have Play Ball. And that one moves, if you guys have been out there to play with it. Which is fun, Side by Each. She Holds Up the Sky. Forever in My Heart. Morning Swim. Two on a Lure. Under the Lover's Moon. Sato's Horse. Fire and Water. Germination. Only God Knows. Balance in the Fray. One O One B. Lotus Emerging. Visions of the Valley. And then it's extended display, but they are still able to be purchased, so we wanted to make sure that you still knew about them, Mountain Spell and Sundance. Correct, the Runner, Running Girl, which was a piece before this, was purchased, um, by Connie Martin and donated to S L V Health. So you might be seeing that one at S L V Health, but, correct, Mountain Spell's just, um, the artist has continued to let us show it. I'm getting there. Four thousand? I've already subtracted the twenty percent. And with that, that is the presentation, so I can scroll back and forth between the pieces as you guys talk.
We're gonna, we're gonna probably have some questions about pricing, so I'm just gonna recognize the council members, Counselor Vehoe?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Well, I'll, I'll start this off with ones that I like, and kind of going off of what we already have. Um, I, I like to honor, uh, Mr. Mestus for the work that he did to get this going. I do like that one, The Lure, the two, Two on a Lure. Um, and then I think we should also honor, um, the people's choice and the, the, the wood one, the mid, in the middle.
How much was Two on a Lure?
Six thousand. And then the, the wood one, the mid, meet in the middle is a thousand.
Balance, the, the wooden ones, Balance in the Fray?
Balance in the Fray, I'm sorry. I think that's a for sure, for sure, yeah. And then I would like to push for the Two on a Lure, thank you. And me and Ms. Hensley were talking over here a little bit to the, uh, to honor Adams State too, that's, and it's really colorful, it's got that, those greens and those blues. I like what Adams State did too, thank you.
Which, which one is that, Counselor Vehoe, that's got the different?
Uh, Visions of the Valley?
Yep.
That one's pretty good.
Yeah, the vision of the, is that the one with the, right there in front of where the, uh, massage therapist is?
Yeah, the five, six tanks or something, that one's really cool, I like that one, it's pretty cool.
Okay.
How much was Visions of the Valley?
Forty eight.
Forty eight, forty eight.
Okay. Alright, Counselor Daniel?
Thank you, so I, um, I also liked Visions of the Valley, but I wanted to ask how they were holding up to the weather.
I would need to go and inspect them.
Um, I personally, I love Huberto and the bronzes, but we have a lot of those already. And so I would prefer to kind of maybe expand what our collection looks like. My favorite is either Lotus Emerging, which is the one by Kasha. I can never say. I really like that one, and I think it's different than other things that we have, and I think it's a pretty solid display. But I also like Forever in My Heart that Counselor Carson brought um, brought up. And I agree with Balance in the Fray. Um, but I would, again, love Huberto, love the family and all that he's done for our community. I think we just have a lot of pieces similar to that. And so I would ask that we consider expanding our our collection a little bit. Diversifying our collection. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Okay, alright, Counselor Carson?
Um, I think that uh, we're up two-one with Counselor Daniels and I. I agree with you a hundred percent. I was, my list, my three picks were Balance in the Fray for a thousand, Lotus Emerging for six, and Forever in My Heart for four. That puts us at the eleven that we have to spend. So those are my three votes. I do like what Counselor V Hill said, but I also agree that we've we've purchased a lot of bronze. That steel is great. It's a good change. Uh, Lotus Emerging, Emerging is really cool. And we gotta give the people's choice. It's a thousand bucks. I mean, that's a no-brainer. So I I agree with you. I think right now we're at two for that list. Counselor Daniels, I I think it's a good list.
Okay, alright, thank you. Thank you, Counselor Carson. That brings us to Counselor Hensley next.
So I agree with everybody with doing the one that's for the thousand. That's people's choice. I have to tell you, if it um, the, one of the ones that really caught my attention, and I think it's the location, um, but it really stands out, especially in an area that is not very pretty, is the Visions of the Valley, um, because that area is so, um, they're coming down sort of the not-nice-looking side of our 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 city. Well, that, it's true. And so it really, I remember when I first saw it, I was just like, wow, that really stands out. And I just think it makes a huge difference. So I think just from the idea that uh, of what it's doing for that location is a real plus. And so for me, I just really feel very strongly about that one. I think on the others, I'm I'm pretty open to all of them. I guess if I was to pick my favorite, as far as the other one would be the one, um, the, what was it? The Visions of the Heart? Was that what it was called? Or Forever in My Heart? Yes. I really like that one personally, but I do like them all. But I do have to say, if it could hold up, I really, the the one with the bright colors just really stands out for me.
And I just would caution, don't pick them based on location, because they may not be staying there.
And I agree with that, but I guess on that one, unless we have something better to put there, I would actually really.
It's private property and so, yeah, so it it, there's just a little more nuances there.
And you don't think they would want that there?
They weren't really happy when we first priced it there.
Thank you. Who's next? Who's next? Alright, Council Grego there, Council Woodward.
The the three I'd like to go with, and not so much of the bronze, but because of the the fishing here in the valley and stuff is a two on allure. And then uh, the people's choice is the one for a thousand. I agree with the Counselor Hensley, the Visions of the Valley. That would put us at eleven, eleven thousand eight hundred. Over budget by a hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Grego, Counsel Woodward, and then Counselor Carson.
I, yeah, for sure, we gotta go with the people's choice, and I like Two on Allure as well. Those are, those are my two that I I really like.
Alright, I hope somebody's keeping the math on this. So.
I think I've got, so I've got um, Charlie and Kyle for Two on Allure. Everyone so far is Balance in the Fray. Visions of the Valley is um Counselor Hensley and um, Counselor Grego. Sorry, I was saying first names. Um, Lotus, we have Counselor Carson and Counselor Daniel. Forever in My Heart is Counselor Daniel, Counselor Carson, and Counselor Hensley. Is what I have so far.
Alright, so.
And.
Go ahead.
I was, I was people's choice, Two on Allure. And then third would either be Lotus or the Adam State.
Vision Valley.
Okay.
Alright, so um, my favorite is Sato's Horse. I mean, that's my favorite. If I'm gonna tell you about my favorite, I really love that one. But I know that's out of our budget right now. So my four, would, well, mine would be Visions of the Valley. Um, is it Balance in the Fray? Okay, Lotus, and Forever in My Heart. And I'm not for sure how much all of that. I don't know how much that comes up to. Am I, am I, am I going past the budget?
You're gonna have to, what's your last one? That if you have to cut one, what's the one you would cut, so I can?
You know, I I like Forever in My Heart. So I would have to probably cut Lotus, because I really do like the Vision of the Valley and the Balance in the Fray. If I have to make it fit within a budget. I don't wanna have to make a budget amendment or motion up here, but.
So if I take you off of Lotus, that means we only had two for Lotus, whereas everyone's for Balance in the Fray. Um, we have three for Two on Allure. Um. We have three definitely for Visions of the Valley. We have one, two, three, four for Forever in My Heart. So I would say Forever in My Heart has four. So the Lotus, so it it depends on if Counselor V Hill throws his behind Visions of the Valley, would make that four. Or if he throws it behind Lotus and that makes it three. I need to know which way you're going.
Comes the pressure, the pressure.
It's a feather. Okay, so then that would mean four for Visions of the Valley. So that's eight thousand, that's nine thousand. So I think those would be the three that we would be purchasing.
Or carry it forward.
Or you can carry it forward to buy something at some point, like the horse.
We're good? Okay.
Okay, do you want me to, so Balance in the Fray, Visions of the Valley, and Forever in My Heart?
Yes. Council, I have to commend you all. You're real being real great art connoisseurs. I guess if that's a term to where you all are really identifying a lot of great pieces. Our downtown is really uh, improving with the art pieces that we've been able to um, purchase over the years. And it's really making our downtown look beautiful. So I commend you all, as well as all the staff for all your hard work and dedication. Do you need a motion on this?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Counsel Grego?
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we uh, purchase those three pieces of art.
Hey, we got a motion and two seconds.
I do have a question though.
Go ahead.
So what's it gonna tell, how how are we gonna have to, how much are we gonna have to grease that business to keep Visions of the Valley there? Cause it does look good there, Liz. You're absolutely right.
It does. There just might be some better locations and so, yeah.
Not according to Liz, am I?
Alright, we got a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Alright, everybody start voting, please. Alrighty.
The motion carried unanimously.
Great job, everybody. Great job. Okay, that brings us down on the agenda to committee reports. Do we have anybody with committee reports? Counselor Daniel?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. The Homeless Coalition did meet. Um, we did, had a great meeting and got through our um the sheet that we have of resources. We have a little bit more cleanup to do that, but now we're really moving on to gaps and having some conversations about what the gaps look like, how we're going to manage that, and then moving forward. So that committee's been really active, and it's been um, a fun like, I think it feels like we're moving now.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Daniel. Uh, Counsel Grego?
Yeah, I was, I was gonna go ahead and also comment on the Alamosa homeless donation. Thank you. My second one, I I went to the to the Alamosa Senior Citizens Board Meeting. And they talked about their fiftieth anniversary. It went pretty well. Had over a hundred people there. Uh, they talked about their Christmas bazaar and raffles. Uh, they're changing their meetings. Now we're gonna have to bring that up for uh, the Saturday. They're changing their meetings to the third Thursday at ten thirty. And uh, they've had a tough time uh, with their membership a lot due to COVID and then a lot of deaths. They've lost a lot of membership dues and stuff, and they're having a tough time uh, even coming up with the money for the heat down there. So and now I saw on the news where Excel's gonna have another increase in in heat and stuff, so. They're trying to sell this two thousand rand, try to uh, get some money to pay for a uh, what was it, uh, kind of electrical box, a firebox. Hopefully, they sell it, so. And I told them that I was just there filling in till after we have our, a retreat, and then we'll see who uh, gets that position. Senior citizens. They're gonna meet every, every third Thursday at ten thirty in the morning. So that's all I got, man.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Grego, Counsel V Hill, and then Counsel Carson.
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the uh, library board meeting last week on Zoom. Uh, things are going great there. The uh, amount of circulations were down just a little bit in December, but that's normal with the cold weather and holidays and that. Uh, they had a great display for um, the light, the 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 Light Festival, you know, and Santa Claus was there and all that stuff, and that was good. Um, they are going to come and and present to us, I think, at the next meeting, the first meeting of March. And there's gonna be a pretty big announcement there. Um, but Saleah is awesome, and she's doing a great job with the uh, library. They were able to do Storytime outside in November, cause of the nice weather. That was cool. Um, and they have the story walks, as you all know. So they're just rocking and rolling over there. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel V Hill, Counsel Carson.
So uh, this last week, we had our monthly meeting of the Cog and the council governments and the DRG and um, just stuff that's going on there is they're remodeling the people right now. They've got uh, some new, they're updating it. It's fairly dated. Some of the carpet on the walls and stuff like that, the maroon carpet, old school chairs. So they're bringing that up to date. We did come uh, chronologically move those meetings closer together for for some convenience and overlap, so that some of the cog members do get to listen in on some of the DRG stuff and be able to, to, you know, move that information out there a little bit. Um, the cog is stepping up some of its duties. We we were questioning what the purpose of the cog was for a while, because it became kind of a stagnant entity for for, you know, at least the period of COVID for sure. So we're gonna be bumping up what they're doing and their involvement directly in some of the funding that they do and uh, some of the approachability that they can, you know, the ways they can be approached for funding and for um, doing some of those pass-through grants that they're doing. They did not get the mini-grants this year, so those will be on hold. There was just some funding uh, deadlines that didn't get met, things like that, and lack of funding in some sources. So they did, they're not gonna be doing the mini-grants. Uh, one of the topics that we did talk about, again, and I'll I'll touch on it in my council comments is um uh, everybody there was really actively engaged in trying to find out more information on the renewable water resources proposal that Douglas County, you know, and Douglas County's involvement now. And so that's really become a front-runner item for myself, for the district. And, you know, as as we know here at the City of Alamo, we're opposed to that. So that was kind of a a topic that we spoke about for quite a while. So they're, they're actually drafting up resolutions of opposition as a DRG and a cog entity as well, so that we'll submit that to to the district and to the Protect Our Water campaign. Um, so they're, you know, we're actively involved in that and moving forward with some of that support at the cog and the DRG, so. That's, that's those meetings, the roundtable. We did not have this last month. We'll be having that meeting tomorrow Tuesday. Cancelled one because of COVID and and we are, I I'm presenting the roundtable meetings by Zoom now too, so if you guys wanted to attend, you know, you can, you can listen in on that meeting, and there's a lot of info besides just the water export, a lot of things going on, the Colorado Water Plan and the things that are happening, so. I advise you guys to possibly jump in. I don't know, can they listen? Can we listen to a meeting as more than one council member? Just as an observer, if they're not involved? You can just listen through Zoom, so that way we're not violating any of these regulations. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Counsel Carson. Okay, no further committee reports. Alright, we'll go to uh, staff announcements.
Just gonna let council know, I had a a really great lunch with Ronnie Wisdom yesterday. She is the new administrator for Alamosa County. Um, we filled up the whole hour um, talking about different partnership opportunities and and those types of things. So it was a really great lunch, and I look forward to more. Um, so that was nice. We also last week had our quarterly lunch for the valley managers and administrators. And so it was good just to kind of hear what's going on across the valley. We also invited um, I forget their names, but the individuals who the cog and DRG have hired for broadband to connect with those communities as well and to to understand the resource that they can offer um, for better understanding what their broadband needs might be and how that can tie into potential funding. And so that was a good lunch. And then um, I wanted to squash some rumors. There are some rumors going around that there's gonna be a competition at the Rio Frio on the Dunk Tank Polar Plunge. But it wasn't true. It wasn't true. We did have four staff who who were there and participated and one council member. But there was not a competition, so no need to worry about that. We also had, so I just wanna point that out, but in all seriousness, I do wanna thank um, Andy's staff and probably every department probably has some staff who participated, but putting on the Rio Frio it was really greatly attended, all the different activities. I know community partners helped put on some of the activities as well. So um, it was a great turnout. The weather was amazing. I, it probably doesn't help on the sculptures, but for everything else that helped. And um, walking around with the businesses, it did seem like a busy day and and was working well. So um, it was a a very fun weekend, and I'd like to thank the city staff team who were there for the Dunk Tank, so. That's all I have, Mayor.
Wow, thank you, uh, Ms. Brooks. I'll, I'll save my comments uh, for later. But it really appears like you did stop at Walmart and pick up your A-game of snack talking tonight. Okay, so we will move on down to a consent calendar A, a consent calendar B item. Um, council for liquor authority actions. Counsel Daniel?
Mayor, I move that we approve consent calendar B.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, if not, please start voting. Okay, Ms. Martinez?
The motion carried unanimously.
Awesome, awesome. Thank you. That brings us down to um, our council comments. I'll recognize any council members with their mics on. We're almost at it. Counsel Carson?
Yes, sir.
And then Counsel Daniel.
Uh, I just want to reiterate to everyone on Zoom, everybody here in chambers. Visit protectsamdusvalleywater.com, get involved, share that information, uh, click the obnoxious take action button I have and apprise yourself of what's going on. Um, we need a lot of support. We need letters to the Douglas County Commission. We really wanna stop this from moving forward and stop them from buying into that proposal. Mind you, it's not the end if they buy in, but it does give RWR the ability to file a case in water court and start the proceedings, which again, it's my job and the district's job and us as a valley's job to then tie them up in court for ten years if we have to and fight that change of water rights to, you know, keep that finite resource that we have here. There is, there is no water to be had, and so. And so, um, I'd advise everybody to, to get involved there. And, um, I do want to also commend, uh, Counselor Sweets out and City Manager Brooks on the augmentation plan. I reviewed it as of late again. It's going well, doing a great job. So thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Counselor Carson. Appreciate that. Counselor Daniel?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, I wanted to say first of all, Happy Groundhog Day. So it's February second. I, I did hear the Groundhog Day, um, but still happy Groundhog Day, and then hopefully they find a new one. Um, and then really wanted to thank the whole entire team for the, um, the Rio Frio. I think it was so, um, so well-attended um, and just a lot of fun. So for those of you who couldn't make it, it was a ton of fun. Um, for those of you who are there, thank you so much for, for participating. Um, I do think that Grub and Pub was different this year, but it worked really well. And so I really liked that, that idea. Um, and I think the businesses probably got more out of it and with the way that it was structured this year. In addition to the, I, I made this whole speech trying to be like Ty for the Fire and Ice sculpture. And the only thing people are talking to me about is that they saw me dancing on Facebook Live, so, um, which is not awesome. But, uh, it was a great, everything was a great event. Um, I really appreciated it. I saw, so I saw a bunch of city staff out there, the park staff. But also, um, these, these gentlemen were out there, um, ready to like help with shovels and sweeping and everything, and they were there all day. So I was there in the morning, and I said, hi, and I said, thanks so much for being out here, and they were still there, ready at the end of the night. They were the same team. And so I, and they were smiling still, and they were like, yes, we love to be out here. And so they, they just did a wonderful job, and I just really appreciate that. The other thing, thinking about all the snow that we're having, and also all of the, people are starting to go back out with COVID feeling a little bit. Like more people are trying to venture out, and there's still this really big anxiety of being in public spaces. There's really huge fear and concern among people who haven't been maybe face-to-face with folks in a while. And a lot of grief and loss, just for people we've lost, uh, people that have been lost in our community, as well as grief and loss for the things we used to have that don't feel the same anymore. And so as we're going through our lives and our work and our days, just remembering that everyone's bringing something different to the work that they've come to, to the spaces that they're having, to the challenging experiences that they might be having. So just providing a little grace and taking a deep breath with those who might be struggling is just something I wanna remind us all to do and to say thank you all.
Thank you very much, uh, Counselor Daniel. Have any other comments? If not, I'll, I'll just wrap up some things. Um, first of all, I'd like to thank the city staff and everyone who showed up in the polar plunge, um, who outnumbered City Council, um, and, and really, um, showed out this weekend. Congratulations to you all. And as I, as I promised to the city manager, I would take a bow. To each one of you. Thank you so very much. It was advised to me, counsel, that maybe I should start small, and next year instead of trying to encourage you all to do the polar plunge, maybe start off with the run or either just the ball and fire, and maybe we'll get more participation next year. So I'm, I'm hoping we can show up in huge numbers next year, so I can return the smack talking to council, I mean, to Ms. Brooks, who will hold this against us for the rest of the year. Okay? So the other thing I would like to do is, I really wanna thank, uh, Mayor Pro Tim, uh, Daniel. She showed up to just about all the events. She was there. She did speeches. She did her dance. She got dunked in the water, did the run. Uh, you, you really showed up and represented the city of Alamosa, and I really thank you so much. I'm gonna give you a round of applause. For those of you who don't know, unfortunately, um, I think something was playing a trick on me. I ended up with COVID last week. And, um, I, I tested negative today, so I'm not exposed to anything, but unfortunately, that's like the worst punishment for an extrovert person like me to be confined in a house, to see my girlfriend bring my food and leave it on the porch and wave. That was, it was tragic, but I'm glad I was able to make it through that. And then finally, I wanna thank each and every one of you. My, uh, father passed away last Wednesday. And, um, my dad and I were very close. My dad was, uh, a great man who was also my role model and my hero. He taught me to be the person I am today. Uh, unfortunately, he passed away last Wednesday, and I just wanna thank each one of you for reaching out either by phone, by email, by text, by cards, by just patting me on the shoulder, giving me that word of encouragement and hope to move forward. And it just really helped me feel confident, uh, from hearing the condolences that were received by so many people. So thank you for that, myself, my brother, and my family. Uh, thank you. And with that being said, this meeting is adjourned. Good job, everybody.